More to come at the block party. We will be doing three.
Wait, wait, you just can't leave right now. Not without some comments from this board. I don't know where you want to start, but somebody has to start and say something. Who wants to start?
That's a lot of time over the summer. A lot of practice, a lot of dedication. It's wild. My kids came in over the three times to come in and listen.
Please, somebody, I mean, I've got like an hour I could do right now. First of all, who knows the, who sang that song? Original?
Which one?
Your close.
Downtown.
Fatula Clark. I wanted to get up and dance. I asked TJ, but he wouldn't excel, so, please.
I would be happy to take it on.
Thank you.
For many reasons, not the least of which, I'm allowed. And I have done musicals in high school theater, I've done two of them. It is quite a place to be. I introduce to them, because it warms my heart to see they were so strong in the way. They're really good. And it's so good. Gentlemen particularly, yeah, the ones that were standing in the back line that are now in the front. You'll be a. Because I will tell you again from personal experience, ladies and gentlemen, talking about. If you need a partner, what are you gonna do, right? So I am really excited to see such a good mixture involved in the program. That is really great to see this. So from the bottom of my.
Wow. Well, it's a pretty tough act to follow after that shot. Anybody else?
That's very good.
Yeah, that's.
Do we have any fresh?
Do we have any fresh? It's just a sampling, you guys? Yeah. I think I believe when I was watching.
You make a crowd.
And it was fun.
She also brought in, along also Emma Linder. She is with our stage manager. She's been involved in the work that's been based to this, along with the center design and the lighting, but we didn't do this. So it's just in the eye of the eye, what comes into this, how to create manage. So how to keep the whole production running and making sure that all the actors and crew are doing what they need.
They call a part of that.
Thank you. You know, the next item is for being new school year changes and challenges. They have to follow this? It better be real stimulating, Lowell.
It does go into the presentation though, because about four or five slides down, it talks about the block party and golf outing and really the sense of community. And earlier because the parents who must have said, I think probably the other best performance and word meaning to say it for both things. And it shows up with the style of conduct. And so it kind of does the range around of the block party and the middle school, I think, yeah. And all started with the parents. And the summer replacement stands will be a little more peaceful, that's why we got off. But summer planning for the school year starts, well, probably it really starts picking up around the back beginning of July. And we started our 23th, they were crazy, quite exciting, like, uh, we had a new relationship with our vision for a fair and all trip and later, but. So quite exciting stuff, they did just. And after that, uh, but it's stuff, the background stuff, we should know. We started planning, uh, for the teachers, the teachers, through classes, through, uh, a lot of that planning that we did, but people are very, uh, they weren't. But, um, this is a bit where they've gotten into that. Forward thinking, that's taken up a time or two, some of the issues. Uh, the, uh, yeah, great thing about it, uh, thousands, uh, we were saying, uh, about. Uh, we did a part show, uh, up to this point, we've focused on training, we were, we were looking at, you know, what started the shift into it. It's not true, it's not true. The numbers, that was the first year that forward thinking came on and I knew it was. But it's just like, it was a free field trip, and that was like, uh, we just got, uh, we just were members, uh, covered with the board members, uh, yeah, we were there, over there, uh, and felt our way. And, uh, you do, it's not what it is. I guess, in fact, if everybody worked together, it kind of. Probably just like, a couple of things, uh, the best presentation, uh, we got this shit on our end stage, but obviously we'll save that for. And those are two of the things. Speaking of more community building, we're, we're probably just, uh, by, by, uh, because. I would, uh, get into that, uh, we had lots of, we have a reason, I'm not sure, it's, uh, that's why. I would have had to do, uh, side first, but this is true, too, always do good. Uh, all the, uh, things that we did, uh, uh, got my, uh, I don't know, I don't know, it's, uh, it's really popular, uh, after the year. Or D work, uh, we did that, they don't fall into the tree, that's why they're, 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 uh, banned, purposes, we met this game, uh, to, uh, uh. But it's, uh, really large, I think that, uh, you know, survive, you know, uh, uh, uh. It's really important to be real, uh, uh, uh. And then next to black, uh, uh, we, we, uh, uh, yeah, well, we're the only one. Elementary, again, I have holidays, there's some pictures, uh, there's, I was just counting some pictures, like, uh, uh, already. Uh, I'm behind the lap, I'm, I'm trying to capture the kids who are excited and started to be willing, uh, to, uh, to play with the black kids. And, uh, the baby, when they did, he, they're, they're. That's the cheaper, uh, 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 beautiful, uh, uh, uh. It's a, I think, we do, uh, this period, actually, and then, uh, one of the writers, uh, everybody's, uh, 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 fifth, the first two, the school, the first two, uh, celebrate, uh, uh, successful kickoff. Whoever invented the, and I told you guys this, whoever invented the bouncy houses, really added to fitness. Cause, and you can't see it here, but the big crowd is all the little kids over by the bouncy houses, and their parents train them, they don't possibly do that. Um, the focus, this year when we did our kickoff with our staff was acknowledging all the changes that are taking place. Um, and so we kicked off, there's the Lion King clip, where, uh, if you've come here with the movie, but Simba, uh, gets whacked on, they ask by the monkey, that says, you know, he's not ready to change, he's like, okay, I guess I am. The point was, this next one, and this is, so I'm tying up a Disney character with a retired general. But, um, if you don't like change, you're gonna hate being irrelevant. If Simba, it's, the point was, if Simba hadn't gone back, you know, it wouldn't have been halfway into the business, they don't make it like that, so, um. Change, we're going from the past lane to the fast lane. Uh, more change in the past several years than the past several decades. The common core, S P R effectiveness, which sounds a lot like paper performance. Um, we could probably restore any of this place as fun, and we actually did a little bit. Um, the teacher handbooks, change in the state law, these are all things you guys and everybody in the audience, for the most part, is mineral technology. Just think of yourself, once you learn something, then you have somebody like Erica walks in and goes, oh, wait, this is better, learn this one instead. And then you get that one, and then now we do this thing, but what the bottom line is, remember all that research about the kids and bathroom, bathroom, all the books around? We're almost to the point where you're doing a bit of paper and vessels and textbooks. It'll be fun to watch evolution, um, in the middle of the, they go to the one to one initiative, uh. It's very exciting. Where's this change taking us? And this is, this part is my philosophy about the way the state is going. Uh, and the reasons are listed here, the open enrollment, they blew the timelines out of the water, it used to be a eleven day window, it's now four months. And you can do a open enrollment exception for just about any reason, I mean, virtually, almost any reason. Uh, charter schools, they're looking at the statewide board, where the local control is kind of going away. So if someone, a for-profit school wants to come in here and open up, they don't have to go to our school board, they can go to the state board. Uh, voucher schools, well, that was already expanding statewide, and I don't think anybody believes that the cap is gonna stay where it is. So survive, how do we survive? Through school report cards, there's two ways of looking at it, affirmative or positive. District report cards, where do you want your child, paper performance, how do we keep, how do we keep the advantage we have? Uh. This we talked about last year a little bit, when we first introduced the name to the common core, we saw it coming, the board saw it coming, the board heard many presentations on it and supported our change for the common core. We prepared for the change because we want to get to successful, also more than that. And our kids are gonna be able to compete not only locally, but globally as well. When they go off to college, it's amazing how much they're pushing for a bigger national experience, uh, almost every major is doing that. How do we survive and thrive? Do we want to transform the Whittman School District into a destination district? In other words, a place where teachers and staff want to be. And so we have to define that, because we thought, well, we have a private committee that, you know, working on, you can visit the building, representatives from the building, they come to the district, and, uh, we're gonna, we'll be working on that throughout the year. Parents, uh, what do we have to offer from the Whittman School District that's not readily apparent in other schools, that'd be much easier to cover, whether it's moving in or whatever it is. For students, they just need a chance to develop. Surviving and thriving, developing and maintaining, strong community engagement, that's our strength. We have a community school, we have a strong community, there's community events almost every weekend. Uh, there's so many opportunities here, we have to take advantage of the fact that because we're a community school, we need to gain that community support to keep it strong. Uh, forward thinking was a big part of that, we began a process. And when we're ready for presentations, uh. Our commitment to engage children that never change. The kids recognize the fact that there are many changes, maybe the adults do that, so that they don't have to panic about the changes, they know they can rely on us to guide them. Oh, and that's this bottom line, this one, what is this true today as it was last year? Nothing so true twenty thirty years ago, but the jobs our kids have now that just graduated, they weren't in existence, many of them, than fifteen years ago. So when we're looking at that group of first grade kids, trying to figure out what we're gonna train them for, what we're training them for to be successful, to be able to adapt, to think on their feet, to, uh, make most of their talents, and to be a team leader or a team participant, to help their team be well. Which our school district, I believe, does make a difference. Basically, I just try, we do very well, so I'm focusing on kids. I mean, from our, you can have, uh, a discussion with a teacher in the hall, you know, and you're, everybody's really feeling strongly about whatever it is we're talking about. As soon as the kids walk in, it's like the game face goes on, and you're, they're excited to do the kids, and that's, that's what it's all about, and, uh, that's why we're here. Um, this is still embargoed, but it's nice to see we still have student expectations, we need to build on that, I mean, a bit higher, 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 if you want. Uh, these kids can, I mean, you know, pick them up. Um, that's the difference in report cards, the first time it's come out. Our, it's a fundamental purpose of our school, we're committed to working together in a professional learning community, where we're, we're extremely committed to that. Informal, formal assessments, we don't just take what comes out of a textbook, we assess someone, see where they are, and then take where their strengths are, try to build on their strengths, and if they need help on remediation on, on some of their weaknesses, we try to give them that to help them grow. Community partnerships, again, if one, and one teacher can't do it, they need help, but the parents, the parents need the support, the schools need the support of the community. Best way to get that, is with being positive, everybody likes to be part of a success cycle. This is bragging on our district again, I, I mean, it's amazing how many people you run into in the professional world that are Whittman alumni. Whether it's our architects that we hire, uh, for our buildings, or people that have constructed buildings, it's, uh, there's a lot of talented people that are hungry to be a member of your building. And then that's just the philosophy for our teachers, we're constantly looking at ways that you can help. And since I did the Lion King thing, uh, seeing that the big, kind of, little, the staff, through the bottom, there's no way to, so we'll get it done. And then of course, we're dead on cloud. That's it, I guess, um, if there's questions, I'd be happy to address those, um, but I just wanted to give you a plan for what to attend in the, or four or five weeks before school starts and the kickoff, to get everybody about.
Thank you, Lowell. Any comments or questions?
I have heard nothing but positive about the middle school and that rollout, which was an incredible feat of staff, support, partner, sophomore, kids, teachers, just anybody. Uh, nothing but good things from kids to parents. Uh, first of all, my daughter is more than thrilled to be down to one textbook instead of three, so she's really excited about not logging her books everywhere. Uh, but it has gone very well, and that was, that was an incredible effort to get.
And again, kudos to the staff, because the staff we hired came in over the summer, when our kids walked through the door, they were ready, they hadn't heard, uh, that wall was all the wind, and, uh, watching you talk.
Yeah, that was, that was great.
Any else?
I was gonna say, at the high school, I mean, they kind of hit the door and they were running, I mean, there was homework first night, they were ready for them. They were more ready than I was.
And I was at the football game on Friday at Greensville, and wonderful representation. Um, I think the only head of fellow students wanted to come down there, shaking the light bulb a little too much for Greensville's liking, but it was, it was well attended by students and, uh, parents. I, I met Eileen, yes. Kept on going.
He was afraid I'd pull him.
I was going to watch the game, that's all, just being a parent.
Yeah, thank you, Lowell. Next item, uh, common, uh, common core standards, so this is Mr. Zelazski.
I think we couldn't get any worse than this, performing, people then giving the district wide vision, the district attorney walks in, you know, it's like Bill and Alvin. As everyone knows, it's pretty arduous, so. So I have been charged with the, talking about the ever so exciting common core standards, which we got up here and talked about before, but today, I'm gonna take a little bit of, of approach.
Just to kind of.
The exact report that was, was requested was what exactly is the common core state standard community development? And, uh, you've talked previously about the fact of the rigor and relevance of what it is, which really needs to be, but how does that kind of do it? And I think that we saw in the, uh, number one, standards themselves, and whether they're, whether they're naturalized. But more importantly, the next two, where we've been able to call our teachers, we've been able to, uh, we've collaborated with them to develop consistently, and we continue to support themselves, so that, um, despite any interruptions to the system, we can use for, perhaps, a little point of, uh. So, maybe this will work, it'll be a while, there we go. Similar to, uh, Dr. Moat's message, first thing we came out of the, of the gates with this year, obviously, it's proof of the, the business of education has to do everything, as everyone still said. So everybody who got in the room, we talked about the pub, we were new and fancy fancy, and, uh.
We were talking about that with the Kito coordinator, who you're gonna meet later tonight, and we're talking about teams, and they're, they're coming up.
And Laura Zalenti, who's always known to, uh, to bring forward some, some type of telling situation, she always do a story, tell, she always has a story, and every story has a, has a purpose. And there typically always supplements, we've got some food courts down at wherever else, far more reading than I can ever be. But she was telling me the story about how she was up north and coming back, and as we all know, when you come back from up north, there's, uh, ways of your kind of approaching the trip back. Number one is, do I really have to go back, and I just find a job watching up here and I'll stay there forever? Or the second one is, boy, I feel well rested, I'm ready to rock and roll, let's hit the ground running. Of course, she always comes back ready to hit the ground running, uh, and did that, and we started talking about choices, and I had been at the, uh, Chinese buffet with my family about a week before, I was on the place that I sat, you know, four kids. And, uh, I got a, a little fortune there that said, your choices will turn your happiness, she was like, and I think, look, you're on the table, and it's the irony of that whole thing, like, we're done. But Laura told me all about, um, her story, coming down from up north, and she said, I had, I had to just, I, I, she slapped her husband on the shoulder, made him pull over, and she ran across the road, and sent a picture, and it was about, uh, the most, most excited, and she, she went on, and it was a good point. And this came out of the kind of theme, our approach to looking at, uh, we have all these changes, and we have all these things coming at us, and we have the choice. And we're basically doing these choices every day, and they need to, uh, go down, go down the road, and they're acting, it's a real sign, it's a, it's a real sign, so, thanks to Laura for that. She tells a much better story than I do, but I think it's important, and I want to share with you, because it came out of the theme, it set in its own, uh, course, I mean, I'm gonna do business, but we can look at this in our argument, we've got the series, we're, uh, at the same time, very realistic, we need our choices, and that's, and that's. The, uh, the choice that we don't have is to engage in the district wide goal that we are committed to, which in two thousand and twelve, and again, this is where we come back to, um, on the trend, strategic plan. In two thousand and twelve, we had set this three long, lengthy, measurable goal, which I was really fancy on paper, and the bottom line is that, um, of course, it's, it's, uh, our in places being used by everyone, and that's our goal, like, the bottom line. Teams in place by everyone, teachers, teams, support staff, whoever may be during the pandemic, or, or. But aren't for do, for us to do that, we need to take year one and say, what exactly are the common core state standards, how do we become familiar with them? And we did that last year, we had to hire staff, we gave them standards, they went through, they were worshiping, and so where are these kinds of assessments, and where do we system? What is the standard for us, and where do we see gaps? So we took those documents, we got those in place in our whole, and, uh, prepared for this year's goal, which was, now that we have all this stuff in the knowledge of standards are, how do we make advantage of it? Standards are this big, huge, off, six, seven, eight, little different, so they focus for this year, and all this things, we break them into meaningful, to, 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 to. So if this is our end goal, this big, huge thing, whether it's year two, three, four, what are the meaningful, useful goals? Say, for example, I'm afraid we need to keep out of it, right? Or, of course, if you're gonna do a breakout, it's like, you're starting to stop at a time, there's certain requirements, but there are all kinds of things that you're trying to get at, right? Starting, you know, higher, down, other, other side of the road, so only breakout, something meaningful, something along the way. So that was our hope of this year. The big idea where this ties to everything is that districts who engage in this process have standards and assessments, they're able to monitor our progress, are the ones who would be able to, in this game, we're the ones who will be able to monitor ourselves, monitor our own progress, make adjustments to what we're doing, in order to do something. That's the idea. Build a system in which we're continuing to adapt, where we are, and where we want to be, our system, our own, our own. So where do we start? First thing, what it is exactly wants to do, how do we know that they are able to do that? And what do we do if they don't? So this is what it looks like. You heard these words, Common Core State Standards, learning targets, manageable challenges. Assessments, common assessments, best scores, papers, projects, stuff you can collect, the evidence. And once we, once students are not able to hit that target, we need to communicate, and we need to, how do we get people to believe? So to know the ideas that we're trying to get from the ground up, within the context of what we're doing. So we start with the foundation, which are those learning targets. Again, manageable jobs, and standards. This is, as far as this work, it sounds simple, but if you look at these standards, there's a difference. And if you look at the structures that they're on, like, seventy-five, seventy-two, if you can identify, whoever, I don't know. So it's a lot of work to try to figure out how exactly these targets are, but I'm pretty glad we're here. We're on board with that, and we have some great leadership in the top level, and we're also making it happen. We talk about implications for the district. First thing is we need to research this more, and we need to research this more, practice, talk a little stuff like your other students do. All of our teachers, the entire district, including me, all the articles on the art society teaching. They do saw that activity, they thought about it, thought about the structural practice, they wondered if it's following the learning targets. They all have professional reading over the summer. Worksheets, a list of special needs, stuff that's been done in the small, the large, the private, they need to be aware of, we need to be aware of, research this on class. Build collective knowledge, that's the thing. We need to have the same body that we're working from, the same understanding, and we need to have the confidence in each other and ourselves in order to make that happen. We need professional development to satisfy those strategic goals, and we need to have professional development to be meaningful, not just some expert coming in and saying, "Fix this," and then walk away. We need somebody who has some standing, we need people who are actually teachers in our district, saying, "This is where we need to have the faculty center, where we need to score the grades." We need to engage in a planned study act process, that's what we talked about back here, with our actual planning process. Plan what we're gonna do, and do it, and sit down and study it, what worked, what didn't, and then ask, what adjustments do we need to do? And lastly, most importantly, we need to celebrate, there is so much that's going on here beyond the great stuff that's happening at the curriculum for students that are front-enders. Believe they're not my office, kind of exciting to do. For me, it's super exciting. There's progress being made in this district that parallel very, very few districts, and that we've got to be able to, to be able to work this out. And just as, I'm not saying that depends having a goal, I can prove it in that Cooper app, last year when Dr. Vinkman, the DLC stuff, about the survey and all that, with a kid involved last week. And there's a Common Core delivery app, and part of it is National Conference of Texas, and that's one, our, the, the, the book, some, uh, two, three books, um, so. So what our teachers are, are collaborating, and has developed a community, which is really down there, or something, could be national, so. It's not something that's made up, or this, uh, this is where we go here. So, the second most important component besides the rigor and the relevance are the K-1 coordinators, and you have approved these positions last year, and I thought it was a great time for you to see some of the faces and the things you don't know who we are. Aaron Vanek is not able to be here, this other, I guess, head secretary, he's a coach. But our three other folks are here, so we have Laura Silley, who's our scientific coordinator. There's Big Bob, there's Big Bob. Ben Cry, who is a curriculum coordinator for English and Arts, teacher at the high school. And Lenny Penell, who is our first coordinator for the social sciences, in the middle school. The reason I wanted to talk about them is so that when, back when we had approved the positions, we had talked about the vision and how exactly this would work. But these four people are unbelievable in part, the brainpower that goes on. There's no way that I could sit and concoct some crazy awesome idea, seem like I was like, before, done, what they said, done, just watch me, I was all, oh, oh. As far as the collaborative release days, the structure that we're putting forth, we put out a survey about the Augustus School, those are the days, and next to the K-1 coordinators. And we got parts off, or about six percent, and the most relevant thing we've ever done, we need more working hours. We need more time to actually deal with these Common Core State Standards, learning targets, and those four are the ones who came in and helped facilitate that, bringing people together. They have something that none of us, none of the rest of us do. They have a rapport with their colleagues. They're in the trenches, they're in the classroom, they're not coming in as experts saying, "Do it, and I walk away." They're saying, "Do it, I know it's hard, because I do it, I'm gonna do it with all, you know, with you." Shoulder to shoulder, ready to rock and roll, and that's where the progress has been really, 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 really. So I can't say enough about what they do, and what they turn at the table. It's gonna be really exciting this year if you watch, uh, collaborative release, the state coming up this Wednesday. That one'll be a little bit, a little bit interesting, because it's really all good ones on their homes, uh, these first days, but after that one, it becomes a routine. They have their groups already set out communications, and they're already sort of working toward the articulation of quality targets. So the idea is that by the end of this year, from a realistic sense, we'll have all standards moving down to all of our others. Third component that I talked about, besides the leadership curricular wise, we talked about quality professional development, and all the things we run through the back, and we've worked out. If you had plenty of those professional developments, seminars, that are just tools for people, right? This, uh, this, and then you say, "Oh, that people only had a million dollars, about, you know, four hundred and fifty days to finish the calendar year, and about fifteen or twenty more points per day, and they're all over the next three weeks, I'm gonna get that one." So we want to look at professional development in an equal way and say, "What should we do if this is what we're doing?" And in the context of, you know, the fair environment, how do we do it for less money? For less money, that's the whole thing. So we have unbelievable expertise here. We need to, remember, years, and months, and then the people that are back, and everything, remember, people who are on staff, and all the places, and things, and things. So the idea was, instead of, you know, we want to secure your professional development. Philosopher is the quality professional development, four educators, it's best research designed by educators. Do whatever the people who's totalize, people who store up, that's the whole idea, with the people who design the tools, and people who work to get it back. It seems like simple marketing, but hey, you know what? It makes sense. So we want that same marketing when it comes to our professional development. This team sits down, actually researches, plans, and then strategically designs the highest quality professional development. Doesn't mean that they're the ones that are probably doing it like I'm doing right now with the best, worst practices, right, telling everybody what they should be doing. They're designing the actual activity, engaging colleagues with other colleagues, bringing certain colleagues who have an expertise in a certain area to use it in another group. Looking at professional reading and segmenting book on the United States, or textbook, their job is exactly that. So I worked with them, we worked last year, we took a couple over these days, and worked in planning the Augustus School.
... They took, they came in the summer, they came in the school year, they came in during the institute, making adjustments to last minute and doing all the stuff so that their colleagues could have a quality period. That is powerful. That is powerful because those people have stayed there. Those people know that when they go back to their meetings, it's not about, okay, I got that very well. It's just talk about what you're working on. Because they're there with them saying, good meeting. So you can see, I mean, the morning was all about the book that they all read. And by the way, they read, um, they read strategically. Each teacher was assigned a chapter. And then they met with their chapter program. They had designed lessons to their other colleagues about their chapter. When they mixed their roots, they were all teaching each other and having discussions all, all morning long. And, uh, and then in the afternoon, they had different stations where they were taking trips and talking over the following learning target book like how we like it, and all that great stuff, kind of setting the stage. And then on Wednesday, all day long, except for lunch, we remember some debates going on on the table. Um, people were fired up about the design of their, their quality learning targets, looking at the Common Core. What does this look like? What does it mean? And, uh, there are a couple of important ideas that we wanted to tell you about because we feel that they're important for us. The first one is our walls are coming down. And I just left that little example that I walked you through tonight. But, um, our walls are coming down and the view is amazing. The old days of school are now on, right? Where the English is here, and the math is here, and the science is here, and the social studies is here, and the history is here, and the school over there. It doesn't work that way. It doesn't work that way. It's all interchangeable. You see concepts, all the aspects all together, and that's the beauty of it. The more common we have diversity across disciplines, the closer we get. The longer we hold it, the more we learn. The Common Core will change the way we do business, not simply look, feel, and sound differently. This too shall pass, will be a fool's saying because of law. And we've said that over and over and over again. So the high school staff, when I first came on, we could even say as long as I'm here, we're not going anywhere. And it's still around, but I'm still around, so, hey, they're not going anywhere. This is going to change the manner we are. Perfection is not an expectation or excuse. Perfection is not an expectation or excuse. You can't expect to be perfect. We're trying to out. I was in our own children. I'm definitely perfect. Um, and my wife is perfect. She's one person who's perfect. Okay. Try. Perfection is, and it is not an excuse. Just because it doesn't work right doesn't mean we don't do it. You gotta try it. You gotta study it. You have to make judgments. We're committed to that. And it's okay to not know for now. Sometimes we may very late in time, we ask a question, I don't know, I'll look into it, I'll find out, but I really don't know. A lot of it will rest on mercy of somebody else, right? Social sciences, you don't know whether you know it or if you can't last back over it. You hear someday, but you've seen some drafts and you're pretty excited. And the last piece is really, uh, kind of warm and fuzzy, which is offensive to me, but it's very true. You need to trust yourself. You have to believe that this is within your capacity to, to better yourself in order to better students. We need to trust each other. In the elementary, folks, we are asking them to get way out of their comfort zone. They teach all the subjects, right? English, math, science, social studies, and a whole bunch of other stuff. So there's no way that they can look through eighteen hundred, uh, eighteen hundred lines per document. So they're actually dividing up and saying, this group is doing math, this is doing science, this is doing social studies, this is doing English. Trust each other. And when you come back to the table, did that person give it their all to make sure that those are quality learning targets? And they agreed absolutely. And the last piece is trust the process. There are things that we may ask of you, as parents, that may not seem logical to particular importance, but trust the process. In the end, it will, trust the process. Trust that we, as a community team, that we who have, who have worked with you are having, who in fact have your lessons in mind. And the principals were kind enough to stop by, and I think it's really, the reason I was going to collaborate with you here is that if it weren't for that, this community team, this is where the rubber meets the road. All of these principals, all four of them, came together and said, we are committed to the process. The collaborative release days are for the development of quality learning targets. We are committed to working with the K-12 curriculum. We are finally, as a district, slowly building that capacity, meaning the schools are handling it, and the schools can talk about it very easily. And this is, this is exciting stuff. So with that, I find it, um, for Mr. Shaw and Dr. Vance Parker. Take a sound out of there for the evening.
How are we educating our parents to what the Common Core standards are?
Um, last year, we had, we have on the website, if you go on the website, on the parent piece, I have links to all the stuff that's on there, the process of what it looks like. Um, at this point in time, because we're just articulating the learning targets, and it's not due for implementation until 2015, it hasn't changed necessarily the classroom to the point that it would be anything differently in the world. We had, we had a lot of the expectations we had are on the mark. They're just maybe at a different point in the year, or maybe they're at a, uh, a different grade level, or a different trimester. So a lot of it was just moving things around. So one of the ways that we're looking at, part of this whole plan, of this learning target stuff, is visualizing triple brochure, depending on the front page, you know, if you have nothing, it's triple. So book of trimester one, trimester two, trimester three, but a little much too long even, you know, they're all the, they're, they're, uh, they're, uh, that's a lot more difficult. Similar to what the, the high school has on course syllabi in place, usually these kind of informational, they'd be obviously kind of lofty in the air, but they would be a non-syllable, um, or, 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 or. The idea is that as we wrap our heads around this, if we're not, we are, then we're going to, um, put something together that a parent can see.
This is merely just an observation, and I, I am fully behind Common Core. And you know that, you and I talked about this a lot since you brought it up, that I'm completely, absolutely in favor of Common Core. But I noticed in this slide that it had said, Common Core, what, if someone's not there yet, that we're going to work as hard as we can to get them to hit their learning targets. And I think that is critical as a district that we do that. But my concern is what we didn't say, which is, if they have someone who exceeds the target, then what? Now, the easy answer that I would give is, then we give them another target, which is what runs itself well to the system. But how we do that, I guess, I'm hoping that as time goes on and we're more comfortable with all these targets, that we also address that side of the issue, that what does it mean when you have someone who exceeds the target consistently? Or maybe not consistently? But let's, I would hopefully we give as careful consideration to that as we would for someone who may not hit it.
Yep. We have a, a lot of moving parts going on at the same time. A lot of kind of the underfill of all this, and the standard based training has fallen out, and part of the falling learning targets, the provision of comprehensive education. So the idea is differentiating, or, 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 so it shouldn't happen based upon the learning targets throughout that phase of time. These, so it's not about differentiating the fifth grade by going to sixth grade. It's about the fifth grade in numbers and operations. Once we have a learning target there, which number of operations targets do you have seen this season, we may have to differentiate that target with them. Because though they may not, they may excel in that particular piece, they may not excel in another area, maybe in algebra or something like that. So the idea is, a lot of times, we see a point about high school, we do it very well. Just because I take the calculus of the national student, you know, the idea is that there are certain strengths that produce, um, ten and a half. So the idea is by holding this up in the first, instead of, of treating learning as the common school's end game, as their, rather than their, or, 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 or,[619.91]
I, um, I've been getting phone calls all day. It's, "Trust yourself, trust others, and trust the process." Well, I personally, you, we've known each other for several years now, and you're wholeheartedly into this thing. I've always trusted your judgment and this is what you do. They question, because this is becoming a national standard. The national standard, and I've always said that I don't care what, what we do compare, I said, "Don't compare me to the surrounding districts, don't compare me to state, national. How are we going to compete globally?" This becomes the national standards, and the things I'm hearing is that standards have been lowered to encompass everybody across the nation. With the Common Core, they're, they're going to dictate certain textbooks we're using? We will always have that local control?
Well, I can, um, the, the, it's not a break.
Okay, then, you have a board that is committed to this process, three years, five years from now. What's to say the board doesn't want the standard raised to two points? Is it, does it, how, is it that, well, that is the national standard, we're right where we need to be? Or does the board have the local control to be able to say, "We want a higher standard, and we expect you to meet that higher standard?"
Um, I think, I don't, I don't know, whether it's, I tell you what, I, the Common Core, I've never heard it to be lowering, lowering the standard. That, you know, remember the whole thing we talked about converting scores last year? That was converting it from the state to the national. You know, the other part, uh, started with, so, the idea is that no, they're actually higher standard, you know, turn that, the ones we name off or, 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 conversion, but, in a sense of, college, that, that works, those are, are entirely different. But I guess, my, my, I don't know if they're necessarily higher, but they're different. There are different skill sets. Look at them, they're less context specific, and they're more about skills, they're more about reading, they're more about transferable stuff than the old content stuff was. It wasn't, it's not about memorizing certain facts, it's about what skill set is, is we need to have to learn to read here, or to, how it works, or, um, to be able to transfer those, or, any learning, or, or, that, that. So I, you know, I think, I think we know it, you know, if you, if you, if you sound, you know, see, but again, I think this year, you know, the, the, you know, those are name by scores, and this is, they see, as part of that, that's, that's, the converted score, you know, um, they actually, they're, 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 I don't know, I don't know that I would necessarily agree, um, but, they're, 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 they're higher, they're, 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 they're higher, they're, 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 they're.
I guess what I would, would do is maybe encourage parents to actually take a look at what is, what is in those notebooks, and what is in that textbook that is coming home with the children. I know, I personally had done that this summer a little bit when I was trying to read through the pile of stuff that came home, what I was going to keep and what could go in the garbage, because I'm probably going to look at again. And I found that very interesting, to really kind of look and see, see what was, you know, being taught, and do that throughout the class, throughout the school year, I think can give parents who kind of really want to pay, you know, who really have, who really want to focus and find out what's going on, they'll, they'll get a sense of kind of what's being taught, and at the level.
And there, there are, you know, there's a lot, there is a lot of that, you know, there's, building new grade levels, and what is not necessarily five hundred, or, every teacher in, in the district, every Sunday, it's, you know, there's that part of the trust and trust, it's not just for teachers, but it's, you know, that, that our teachers are not, that they're, they're professional, you know, they're doing, and we could very well, we could provide parents, very technical, you know, the Common Core, that, that, that maybe is crazy, I don't know, it's not part of, like, it's all, it's all, it's all, it's a lot of, really, it's, it's, so, you know, we're trying to put it, trying to put this naked, beautiful, or very, very, very manageable, so that we're not miscuing, you know, the parenting, or, you know, we want to make it sort of, clear, manageable, uh, chunked enough, and it's, uh.
Luann?
Really, really excited about all this stuff that, that you all are doing. It is very much cutting edge. And the one, one way that I can tell, despite going out to WST events and then listening to what other districts are doing, that's always kind of gives me a gauge as to where we really at. So, I always get the sense when I come back from one of those, we are really, we think ahead of the game in adapting to the changes that are coming forward. So it really, when you stand up here and tell me that you're finally adjusting to a student's learning style and where they're at, because that was one of the questions I had about learning targets, is how do you then individualize instruction? But you do that because the targets are much clearer. So then it allows you to, uh, reach kids at any level and continue to move them forward. That is so exciting to me, because if you get rid of the grades, first grade, second grade, I think then we'd really truly be meeting our students' needs. So, you know, that's really out there. I know we're not there yet, but that is very exciting to me. Um, so, all of this change is so good, it's, it's great that our board is keeping up. Also, I just want to mention that I was interviewed, because of my connection to El Reno, today by, uh, someone who's maybe going to do a story for our, um, National School Board Association School Board Journal. And I was really, I was really proud to be able to talk about teacher professional development, and the fact that we had these early release days, and when you look at the goals for last year, we would reach all our goals. And as school board members, to be able to explain that to the public, to those parents, when we're making these kind of changes, was really, I was really proud again to represent this district in that interview today. So that was really, so, it's so exciting. Now, here's the, the piece you didn't really address, and maybe we as a board don't need to know all the details behind it, but the teacher accountability piece, those new teacher standards are coming into play as well. And, not that we, I don't want to go into all of that tonight, but I do have a, maybe a question about that, because as intense as it is that we're expecting our teachers in the classroom to, to change their practices and meet these Common Core standards, the standards for teachers are changing, aren't they? And how are we addressing that?
The, the standards for teaching are, they're still being modeled.
I mean, the standards for students.
But the, the accountability.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
And I think that, that one is kind of all over the place, some kind of the, the change, the, 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 you know, the, 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 the idea is, and that's what I talked about earlier, uh, the idea behind this, the message, the, the building of, that, that has sustained the past, and our teachers, are teaching, studying what the, the results, the, 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 the , no matter what model the teacher makes, the, 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 we build the capacity, the, the, that we're, 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 so that's, that's really what we're trying, what we're trying to build, is that system to pass. And they can follow along if they want to, and that, that's fine, but really it's the same, it's still proof, and it's still proof that, that we're fertilizing and nurturing and, and ready to send out what we write. So, um, that's what we're trying to do, is build the past here, obviously, that, that, I mean, I haven't, from what I've seen of the teacher effectiveness models that are out there, we're engaging in that process, whether it's, you know, you're, you know, we're, 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 we're,[973.41]